Call the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Palatán County Board of Supervisors workshop meeting to order. Mr. Williams, if you would help us with the pleasure of allegiance, and Mr. McClung, if you would do the invocation, I'd be grateful.
Lord, thank you for the station you've given us, thank you for this weather, and thank you for the people here, and be with us as we do the work with the people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. On any requests, postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. Not hearing any, we get a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? County Administrator updates.
Yep. Good afternoon. Just quickly, I would like to introduce two new staff members that have joined our team. So first, we have Caroline Davis. She is Recreation Coordinator, standing up back there with our Parks and Rec Department. And then next to her is Jackie Wilkins, who has joined us as Economic Development Assistant. So glad to have them both joining us. That is all I have.
Yeah. Welcome to the both of you. Glad to have you as a part of the team. Now we'll open up our first public comment period. Would you like to come up and speak to the board? That was a great opportunity to do that. You have three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, up to five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of a group. The floor is open.
I heard there's like, oh, my name is Carlos Rondam. I'm from seventeen twenty-seven Tree Lane.
Thank you.
Um, I heard there's like a special grant that's like a sub grant of smart scale that's like regional could, could they, could they apply the Palatán Middle School sidewalk to them, to their regional, to the regional grant, to that subset, the grant that's used for the Richmond region.
Thank you, sir. If anyone online.
No, sir.
Well, we have another gentleman coming up.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Oliver, forty-three, seventy-two, three Bridge Road, Palatán. I'm just up here to speak on, and at the meeting there to support that idea, support the idea of being really standing for a community center. We've had conversations about this for over two plus years, and it's time, I think, for the idea to move forward in a thoughtful sort of way. I think the attendance today demonstrates that there's a lot of people, a lot of interest in such thing. I suppose that's why everybody's here. But I'm here in support of that. I think the community certainly could use it from a space standpoint, could use it from a programming standpoint, to consolidate their services and certainly focus on seniors and the fastest growing population, the demographic in the county. I think that's important for this board to move forward, this proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Ellen D'Amelio. I moved here about a year and a half ago to live with my son on nine fifty Cedar Green. When I moved here, it was a very down time in my life, and I knew I had to establish a new life and do things differently. My first week here, I noticed in the newspaper that there was a meeting of seniors at the rescue squad. I went to it. I tell you, my life changed that day. Seniors meeting seniors, just getting together, laughing, having a good time. Being away from family meant so much to me. I cannot recommend enough an area for seniors to get together, do what they want to do, because it sure changed my life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I live in Scottville, and in Scottville, we have a hundred and nine houses. Of those hundred and nine houses, probably ninety percent of those are active adults, people that are looking to get out, looking to socialize, looking to have fun and enjoy their senior life. Within Scottville, we do not have a community clubhouse. We do not have any type of gathering place where we can get together and play games, socialize, play cards, hold events, anything like this. We need something for that. In the active adult community that we have now in this world, you need a place to socialize. If you don't have a place to socialize, then you become stagnant in your life, and you don't really grow as you get older. I applaud the Community Matters. They have a space, they have it good, but what it is, it's limited. We have a game day that we started over there with Jane's help. She, and we have a room, a day for two hours, and that's when we get people together to socialize. That'll, the people would like to come, but they know it's only a short period of time, so they don't come over. And so it's quite limited by having a short period of time there. You need more space, you need more time, you need a better place. Activities within the senior communities that you have nationwide is of utmost importance. It keeps you from becoming just dead in your late life. Recently, I had a doctor say something to me. I said, I need rehabilitation on this. He said, no, you don't need physical rehabilitation, because if you go home and you sit down, you will die. Kind of blunt, but that's really the truth. As people retire, they get older, they go to their house, they don't have anything to do, that's the end of their life. So they rely heavily upon family to keep them active. In our community now, with the amount of people that we have that are seniors, you need a place to socialize, gather, and have fun together with each other. That's why I totally support and encourage the Board of Supervisors to move forward with this community center that we need desperately in Palatán County. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please state your name and complete address as you speak.
My name is Donna Wyatt. My address is fifteen forty-four Palmer Road, Palatán, Virginia. And I wish I was as elegant as Abbott, but I just wanted to say that the community center is, would be a very important thing to me. I would definitely support it. I would definitely be involved in it, and I've already been involved in the Community Matters and other programs, but it's just exciting to even think that we would go ahead and approve this. So please do.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Margaret Wong. I'm here to speak in for myself and the senior living in this county. I know the Park and Rec Department in Palatán are excellent, a top-notch service for the younger people and a healthy individual, but as a hardworking individual, we have dutifully paid tax all our life. When we get older, I think we deserve some attention. We are not asking government handout. We simply ask for some space so we can mingle and connect. This allows us to maintain our mental and physical health, healthy, so we can continue to contribute to our community and society through volunteering. I truly believe a proper community center does not only benefit seniors, it will help connect people from different culture and age group to know each other and learn from each other. By doing so, it's shrinking our community as a whole. I hope I have, expect my value and urgency to establish a center like this in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Fran Carlton, two-two-one-nine Rossin Road, Palatán. I think the idea of a community center is a great concept for Palatán County, not only for our seniors, but community means kids and families, and to provide a community center for our, all of our existing population would be a plus. To me, what is a no-brainer is, why do a feasibility study and spend that money? I think, could be incorrect, but like sixty-some thousand dollars could be the price. Why don't we just go ahead and commit to this? Save the county that money. It is a no-brainer, lady and gentleman, that we need this for our community. We really do. So if you're looking for a feasibility study, just to see if we need this, well, save yourself some time and money. Just say, all right, we're going to do it. And if you need more time to look for location or whatever, but commit to doing this and saving some money and not doing the study. Just know, we need this. You've, I don't think I've heard anyone, I could be wrong, say, boy, what a waste of money, we sure don't need this. No, and the people I've talked to, community center for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Michael Hersch, one-two-three-four-three Bridge Road, Palatán, because each of our new, the incentive to community, the center is for seniors, everybody else in the county, like the young lady just spoke, it's a no-brainer, it's something that I encourage each one of you to go for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Betty Ashmore, three-oh-six-five Lower Hill, Palatán. Isn't it really sad that a population equal to the number of students in this community that has supported the community through taxes and volunteer work for years has to beg for a gathering place of their own to maintain their own independence and connection to the community? Community Matters has moved four times in less than three years, and even when we have a space, if someone else needs it, we get bumped. Seniors are overlooked, shuffled around, and expected to adapt. We need a solid location so connections can be made and grow, a facility that provides continuing agitation and entertainment without constant interruptions. Seniors are walking history books and a strong group of people who deserve respect and support from this community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Pete Badgett, twenty-nine thirty-six Edith Lane. The simple solution is the World Memorial Building. All we need to do is spend some money there, and we've got a building.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Cody Werrill, so we moved here last year, address, thirty fifty-three Maple Lake Road. My wife and I moved here last year to be closer to our grandchildren, our daughter and her husband. And I, we don't regret the move. It's been a great experience, but they're busy people. We're working every day, and we get to see them, even though they're only ten miles away, we get to see them maybe once a week, and we keep in contact. The moving, we need contact with other seniors, because we're retired, I retired twenty years ago, and we need contact with other people, we have similar interests, we need to keep learning, we need to learn what other people know, and to support one another. We have situations where people may have lost a loved one, and this gives them someplace to go to, to share their grief or to share their story. We have creative education programs, learning we want to know. It's very, it's very beneficial to us, if we're going to continue to run, to be able to work with one another and meet on a regular basis. If we could have someplace to go, we, like I said, when your husband said, we have lived four times, and sometimes it's hard to get in there, but we really know that it's a, it's fire, the seniors to, to remain in contact with one another and learning from one another and supporting one another. Each of us has problems, of one type or another, but if we're isolated, we're going to die. We have to maintain contact with other people. So we should, we go ahead and put this center in place and get it up as soon as possible, because we can have more seniors coming in and need that facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Afternoon. I'm Simon Wong. Margaret and I, we have called Palatán home for the past seventeen years. We adore and love everything about Palatán. As we get older, we started to reach out more to our community to search for our purpose of daily living. Community Matters was the answer. Quality program materialized under dedicated leadership of Jane Lloyd. This program, we have taken advantage of, and we really love it. Today, I want to present to you some numbers to show you the trend that is at hand, and to see if our county is ready for it. To simplify numbers again, a lot of people use fifty-five as seniors. I'm going to use a higher number, sixty-five, okay, Medicare age. Some of my quote is taken from an article written by Dr. Kevin Roth, printed in the National Recreation and Park Association Monthly Magazine, July twenty-seventeen. This article stated that parks and recreation agencies in our nation have had to change to ensure that all members of their communities are able to benefit from what they have to offer. One area of growing interest, older adults. In two thousand seventeen, more than ninety percent of Parks and Recreation Department reported that they have some kind of program to cater to older adults. However, most agency indicated the greatest challenges to provide more services as a result of inadequate resources, including facility, space shortage, and sufficient funding. I want to point out, even for our Parks and Recreation Department, our mission in their statement is to inspire, okay? And to inspire, I really need your help. With your help, we can be an inspirational Parks and Recreation Department. Back to numbers, on the U of Census Bureau, twenty twenty-two, Palatán over sixty-five population is twenty-one percent. Under eighteen is eighteen percent. That's a projection done by UVA, the demographic research group, the population projection for Palatán in year two thousand thirty will be twenty-five point one, and the under eighteen will be twenty-two point two. This number, charming Palatán, has more seniors than school-age children, and the projector rate of increase is also in favor of seniors. Today, one in five of our citizen in Palatán are seniors, and not over fifty-five, over sixty-five. So we have a lot of old people live here. In my professional life, I confess that I was obsessed and fascinated with the motto, no data, no discussion. And I see that has not changed today. I wish I had more brainstorming session with my peers and also with my supervisors to explore new ideas with an open mind when I was younger. In Palatán case, talking about numbers now, over sixty-five have a certain percentage, but one thing, statistic that's not telling us, is where these people, are they all from Palatán growing and become older? That is not the case. Palatán is such a great county. It attracts people like myself and my wife, pursuit of happiness, we're here. A lot of older, older adults that move here because the children or the grandchildren move here, that is all aspiration and clinkers to Palatán.
Mr. Wong?
Yeah.
Your time is up.
Okay, I've got one more sentence. Okay, I'm going to skip that part and then go to the very last. Seniors come in different packages. Their mental and physical capacity vary. In a rural community like ours, it makes sense to emphasize outdoor recreation and trails. We want to be mindful that not all seniors can enjoy hiking or want to hike. We do need a community center for seniors to connect, to learn, and find a purpose to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public comment period. That'll bring us to new business.
So we'll have a brief presentation. As you recall, we put out a request for quotes for a community center feasibility study. Quotes were received, have been reviewed, and staff has a recommendation on one of those. Mr. Hagy will give a brief presentation. And good afternoon, members of the board. Yeah, I have a.
Mr. Hagy, would you move the microphone over, please?
A short slide deck for you, where we'll recap where we've been on the community center feasibility study. Happy to answer any questions that you have as we go, and of course, answer any questions that you have at the end.
You're going to need to turn it on, too. Hit the middle button there. There you go.
Good. All right. So first, I wanted to talk briefly just about the, this way.
There you go.
All right. So first, I wanted to talk briefly about where we've been in terms of the community center concept. So the concept was introduced in fiscal year twenty-three CIP. So around July first of twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors approved five hundred thousand dollars in the CIP for that year. At the time, it was for a senior center project.
Close.
Okay. And in a workshop in September of last year, we took a look at where, what folks in the region were doing in terms of serving older adults in their communities, and we found that most of the counties surrounding Palatán were indeed offering programming for adults fifty-five and older, and they were doing so within their Parks and Recreation Departments in multipurpose community center spaces. And so it was really leaving that September workshop where we realized we had an opportunity to separate the space request from the programming request. The space request really became a community center with multipurpose space, and certainly that would serve adult fifty-five and older programming, but would also be available to accommodate programmings for other community interest groups. It was also during that September workshop where the board asked to be involved in approval of any expenditures on this project. So really, moving forward to present, from, from last September to now, we've been talking about a community center concept. So next, I want to talk a little bit about where we've been in terms of a community center feasibility study. And so it was in April of this year that the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission had a joint workshop with the Board of Supervisors, and it was at that meeting that PrAC identified a community center as one of their top priorities, and they asked the board to authorize a feasibility study. So after that meeting, staff, we worked on a request for proposals that would, that kind of synthesized the discussion of that meeting. And the first draft included a phase one, which would have been a feasibility study, a phase two programming analysis, and then a third phase, which would have included a building design phase. That was distributed to the Board of Supervisors, and we got feedback that that was a broader-than-anticipated scope, and so that RFP was not issued. So from there, we, we took another shot at a draft RFP. In that draft, we maintained the feasibility study scope, so we retained the terms and conditions from the original RFP, the same evaluation criteria, and we also retained a request for respondents to evaluate the building form based on desired functions. That RFP was shared with the board, and that scope was also broader than anticipated, and so that RFP was not issued. So we, we took a third draft at a request for quotes for the community center feasibility study, and at this point, we had reduced the scope to where we took a direct quoting approach. And so we sent a reduced scope feasibility study request out to the eight consulting firms there in the middle of the screen, and we received four proposals back. So one from Barry Dunn, one from Timmons, one from Prose Consulting, and the fourth from TRC. And so the, the last slide I have for you here just shows the ground that we've covered in terms of a community center feasibility study. The items there in blue are, already happened. Those, those events to the right there in orange, those would be next steps if the board were to authorize a feasibility study tonight. So our RFQ closed on the thirty-first of July. On the tenth of August, staff reviewed and ranked the proposals that we received. On the twenty-second of August, we interviewed Barry Dunn. On the twenty-fifth, Barry Dunn submitted their final proposal. So today, if the Board of Supervisors decides to authorize the feasibility study, we could start that study probably in the middle part of October. The proposal includes a six-month timeline with board involvement in those first two months, contact with the board to talk about, importantly, the need, and then to inform the next steps of the study. Six months would put the study concluding around the middle of April of two thousand fourteen, and so then we could have results of a completed feasibility study back in front of the board for a May workshop in next year, two thousand twenty-four. And so that's the information I have for you, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hagy. Comments, board members, questions? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
We'll get right to it.
Okay. Um, I would like to propose to the board, I actually concur with Ms. Carlton, to eliminate, if we know we want this, we've been talking about this now, going on two years. I think the Park and Rec Advisory Committee has recommended it. We've heard from the citizens of our community that they want it. I think, I know three of us are a hundred percent in support of having a community center. So how to, how do we adjust this proposal that we proceed today with moving ahead and getting a community center? Next question for county attorney, administrator, rest of my board, how, how do we do that? How do we accomplish that?
So we would be, if we did that, I guess, the
So we would be, if we did that, I guess, eliminating, would that be phase?
Yeah.
I mean, certainly that the consultant, I think, would do whatever direction we give them. I don't know what the cost implications would be. We would have to go back. And get them to, I guess, revise their quote.
I was just gonna add, I think, you know, in each of the RFPs that we issued, we've included what we termed a feasibility study. And so I. Yep. We've included what we termed a feasibility study, and so I think that there's several elements in the Barry Dunn proposal that we would want to. Include and maintain, you know, no matter what the approach, I think that the conclusions of the feasibility study will be important to inform whatever's next. One of the things during the interview that the consultant shared with us is after determining a need. They would want to work with the, with community leaders to think about what a community center would look like. And he shared that he's worked in communities that are gonna run parks and rec programming just on tax dollars. You know, they're gonna operate with a zero percent expectation of cost recovery. And then he's also worked in communities that have a hundred percent expectation. And we learned in that interview that the design of the building really is informed by that approach. You know, there are areas and spaces that work well if you have no expectation of revenue generation. And then there are other spaces that absolutely are essential if the county expects to. Do some cost recovery on parks and rec programming. And so I think that several of the steps that were included in the feasibility study is just, would be smart planning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go right ahead.
The first two phases of this study really focus on looking at needs. And as you get to the second phase, it really begins to talk about unmet needs, which is really the thing that I think we have to get at. What are the unmet needs in the community? And then what is the best way in which to satisfy those? An example. Currently, YMCA. Provides services for about five thousand people in this county. They have, they are experts, which is sixteen, seventeen percent of the county. They are experts in delivery of programs. So should we, should we be partnering with them? Don't know the answer to that, but those are the kinds of questions that will come out of this study in terms of what is the best. Most efficient way to provide services that the community wants. I think we're talking about through phase two, we're talking about ten thousand dollars. That's to get that information and to build on what Mr. Hagie said. If we go forward, it provides us with a roadmap for exactly the kind of facility. And the human costs that we're going to have to commit to, to provide that. This is not an inexpensive operation. And so. I think the study's laid out well. I support the study as it exists. I don't think we should be abridging it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
I would like to counter with something. When we do this study, one thing I would like to make. Speaking for myself, clear to the consultant. I think a community center is a standalone center. The YMCA, albeit they do great services. We have explored the option of partnering with the Y, and when I had spoken to them several years ago, maybe a year and a half, two years ago. It was fine, but they would still, we would be building onto their building using taxpayer money to add on to a building that we don't own. Furthermore, they would be the one kind of in charge of. Overseeing things, the hours, the, you know, scheduling, we would have to court, it'd be no different than we have right now. I mean, we're having issues scheduling right now. So the idea of a community center, and if you look at most of these other jurisdictions around us, including Goochlin, which I handed all of you a pamphlet of what they do. They have a standalone community center. We looked at the War Memorial Building. The problem with the War Memorial Building, we don't own it. We should have never given it up, but we don't own it. So we have no authority over it. We have no. Jurisdiction over it. So if you want to have a true community center. It needs to be run and facilitated by the county of Palatang. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This, this, thank. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack, I understand where you're coming from, but we have a model in this county that's worked really for decades. It's called the Volunteer Fire Department, where they own their own building. We invest in them, and they provide services for us. And they do it in a much more cost-efficient way than if we had full-time employees. So I don't, I don't know the right direction, I really don't. But what I'd like is all things on the table so that we understand what the taxpayer is going to have to fork out. And what we get for it. And so we have a, we have a model of the volunteer fire departments that work beautifully. And that's the same model that you would see with the Y. Once again, I don't know if the Y is the right white way to go. But I think it's important that we explore these, that we understand it, and we understand the trade-offs that are there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I am the representative from the Board of Supervisors to be on the Parks and Rec Committee. I've been to several of their meetings, and it's overwhelming. I've supported it from the beginning, so. I supported a senior center from the beginning, but also supported a community center when I spoke months ago about how. The community in Palatang could really use a community center and how. You know, we need to move forward with this, but the feasibility, we don't, I mean, the feasibility part of it. We, we don't need a feasibility study to know that we need this, but what we're saying is. That the feasibility study will say what size, what needs we have, how big it needs to be. Stuff like that, stuff that we, we're not experts at, but they are, so. And I support the feasibility study. I support what Ms. Carmack said, that we need a standalone, if we're gonna, we need. The feasibility study will tell us if we need to get the Y involved or not the Y involved. So hopefully they'll guide us in the direction we need to come to a solution on this, but I'm ready to move forward with the community center, so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I will repeat, I would like to modify this resolution somehow. I don't want to go. Two months down the road, three months down the road, I'm not gonna be here. You're not gonna be here, we know that, but. Before I leave my term, I would like to ensure that we will be having a community center. I don't want to be saddling the next board with, well, is it gonna be the Y? Is it gonna be the War Memorial Building? Are we gonna try to work with this? If we want a community center, let's put the stake in the ground today. And have a community center, a standalone community center. However, we need to word this resolution to do such, that is what I would like.
So are you making that a motion?
Yes.
So can you narrow it down and put it in specific? How you want to present the motion, the motion you want to make?
I would.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Proposal of the RFP that we put out had multiple phases. And when we put the RFP out, we told potential vendors, these are the things we want to analyze. If we trim too much of it, I'm concerned we need to go back out to bid because. A vendor may say, well, I was qualified to do one and two, but I am qualified to do three, which is the design and the structure. So if we trim it significantly, I think. From procurement standpoint, we need to go back out to procurement, because what we don't want is vendors. Who are skilled in building design, because if you take out phase one and phase two, phase three is building design. Development, engineering, document administration. So there might be companies that have qualified for building design, aren't qualified for feasibility studies or for. Needs assessment. So that would be my only concern. Is based on what we sought to procure, if we trim it too much. I mean, I could see then, if you trim just the needs assessment, leave in the facilities through the feasibility study. Probably okay, but if you start eliminating the needs assessment and the feasibility study, you're down to building design. I think we need to go back to procurement.
I would just say too. You know, I wouldn't want to trim it down too much and compromise the study because there's not going to be, currently, there's no. Funding for it, so we're gonna have to figure out how we pay for this, and five hundred thousand we have, but that might pay for the engineering of a building, that's probably about it. So, you know, while it's a concept now, a lot of people are supportive, but at some point, we're gonna have a real price tag and number, and we're either going to have to. To pay for it, give up and reprioritize projects, which could be okay, but that means this would come ahead of other projects. We may have to borrow, or we may have to raise the tax rate. Somehow, we have to pay for it. And so I would want to make sure we have a good, strong foundation to justify that. When we have to, you know, face the public and say, these are the things we're compromising to make this a priority. And so I think a study, whatever version of it, will be important to lay that foundation and make sure if we do it. Understanding the urgency and wanting to get going, but hopefully it will be something we get right the first time, and so we don't. Move too quickly, build something, and then three years in operation, find out, we need to, whether we overbuild. Or we need to redo it and put on an addition and add something that we didn't, didn't look at or see. So I want to make sure if we do this, you know, we're building it for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
To that point, I completely concur. I think it's important that we. Do the proper assessment. What I don't want to do is another six months' waste of time, like we've had the preceding two years. We are slated to borrow, if I believe, six point five million dollars next year for Parks and Rec. We have no clue what we're gonna borrow it for yet, exactly what we're gonna borrow it for. We have a group of people here who have iterated over and over, it's our turn. You know, everything doesn't need to be about a ball field and adding on to, you know, the youth. Something else can be helped, the aging population of this county. I think certainly, take your time, absolutely, do a proper assessment, you know, tell your. Barry Dunn or whatever the guy's name is that, you know. If you even have a target price that we want to stay at, stay at, go for that. And then if we want to have a building or facility that we could add on to easily enough, I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways to. To take this, accept this, you know, very linear approach. All I'm saying is, I see how these projects work, and they just take months and months and years and years and years. And with people, you know, spending their afternoon, coming down over and over, I mean, this is what, the fifth time you've been here, you know, asking us for the same thing over and over. It's time to do something. That's all I'm saying. Just put a stake in the ground. We don't need to go back and talk to the Y. We don't need to go back and talk to the War Memorial Building. We know we want a facility. Let's find out where it is, where we want to build it. The size we want to build it, what the implication is gonna be, and how we're gonna fund it. We have six point five million dollars that we can use towards something. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Carmack. Yes, Mr. Williams.
Can you all hear me? No. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good stuff. I'm gonna agree with Mr. McClung. We have a study that the board agreed to do. And the study lays out a path where we can make good decisions, and I'm gonna read from the study. A detailed and multifaceted approach to the county's project focuses on the needs of the community. It's kind of important. Mr. Hagie also, I believe, gets it right. When he mentioned all the different variables that go into, if you're gonna build a building. Form follows function. What are you gonna do in that building? And we're talking about the Department of Recreation. We have a mission statement about building and expanding facilities. We're charged with the taxpayers' dollars and spending those in a manner where we get the most bang for the bucks, serving the community. And if you want to see examples about where the county has failed to plan, and to fail to plan is to plan to fail. Royal Road sixty, where. Put in oversized lines, water and sewer. We're paying for that today. Because we're having to do more flushing than what we normally would. If you're gonna think about going about building a building. Again, you have to know what you're gonna be doing in that building and design the space accordingly. Going back to what the deputy county administrator said. You've got several approaches. Are you going to be looking at any cost recovery in your programming? This whole idea about, we've been at it now for however many months. If you look at the ideology where this all came from, it was a senior center. Then I remember the workshop where we had the discussions Mr. Hagie presented, and. He had done a tour of the region. And he found out that the senior programming was programmed. By and large, through the Departments of Recreation and the different jurisdictions. And at that meeting, Mrs. Carmack. Said, well, can we talk about a community center? Can we just have the discussion? And I said, yes, I'm not afraid of having the discussion. What I'm afraid of is not having the discussion. So here we are, after we had charged staff to go out. Wire an RFP. Evaluate the responses. We have something rather comprehensive from professionals laid out as a path forward to do something that we're all agreeing. It's gonna be a compliment to the community. The charge for us is to get it right. Not just do it, but to make sure we're doing it in such a way that's gonna benefit you. And all the other people in this community in a comprehensive way, in alignment with our goals with Parks and Recreation in this county. That's our goal. That's our charge as your governing body. Again, we have something here that lays it out. From professionals telling us, these are the things that you need to do. To have a successful project and a successful facility here in this community. I don't want to shortcut it and just go out and build anything and end up. Building an outdoor barbecue and ended up with a tri-level home. It doesn't work. So I'm in support of approving this proposal that we have before us this afternoon and moving forward. With plans for a community center. I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We've got one motion.
No, sir, we don't.
Another motion coming now.
We don't have a motion.
We have a start of a motion overhead.
We don't have a motion, is all I'm saying.
Okay, well, then we still don't have a motion, unless you want to second it.
No, I'm just looking, Mrs. Carmack talked about a concept, but not, didn't give us a motion that provides any information.
She did give us a motion. She was looking for some clarity from Mr. Latchmore, how to word it. Now, if that's not a motion, and this is a motion, then you want to second it?
Second, which one?
Mr. Williams.
I'll second Mr. Williams.
Okay. Are we okay with that? Because we don't have a second on this motion, but she can definitely make an amended motion. May I pardon?
If she wants to continue with her motion, I would say we're first for a motion.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to continue.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
She began a motion, so I think she had the floor for the purposes of making the first motion.
Okay. Did you get? No, that's fine. So with her motion, what was going on, the way I was interpreting this is, we were trying to get to a point where this.
I interrupted her motion talking about procurement.
Right, and so you want to make your motion in a more condensed manner? So that we have this clear.
I would like to move that we approve this resolution. With the modification. That with the market analysis, the facility assessment, the financial analysis, some program evaluation, community engagement, and final plans and presentation. Are based upon a standalone county-owned building.
Basically, they shouldn't consider other options like the line.
Correct. That's exactly what I'm saying. We want a community center. Yes.
I'm still not clear.
Yeah, I'm not clear on that one either.
All I'm saying is, we are looking, what I am proposing, we do the analysis. Obviously, they're gonna have to do a building analysis and needs analysis, how big it is, but I think they should proceed with doing a. But I think they should proceed with doing a county-owned standalone building. We're not going to explore the YMCA. We're not going to go out and explore, you know, partnering with eight thousand other organizations. We're going to do a county-owned, which technically it should be. I mean, that was sort of the emphasis going into this. It wasn't ever, oh, we're going to partner with the Y. We're going to do this. It was going to be a county-driven project.
May I comment on your comment?
Please, a second.
Let's, let's see if we could, she's made a motion, so we need to see if she gets a, she gets a second. So repeat it one more time so there's clarity.
I move, we approve this resolution authorizing the Barry Dunn to proceed with the following, based on it being a standalone community center, a community center that is run by Powhatan County, period.
Are you going through this assessment here? Needs assessment, market analysis, facility assessment?
I think we know the needs. It's just-
No, no.
Motion is accepted, but with the caveat that only to analyze county-owned.
Yeah.
Okay, so as the motion is on our packet, but it has to be a county-owned facility on county-owned property. Am I right?
County-managed.
County-operated.
County-managed and operated. What my concern is, is that we're going to get six months down the road and it's going to get jumbled and they're going to come back and it's going to be like, well, we've got this, we've got that. We, the Y might be able to do this and we're going to be no further ahead after sixty thousand dollars. If we know we want a county-run and county, then don't, don't vote for it, gentlemen. If you know you want a county-community center, let's have a county-community center. That's all I'm, I'm saying. That's all I'm proposing.
Okay.
Maybe not get a second, but-
But let's see if she gets the second before we get any farther into this. So the motion's on the floor, um, that we're going to continue on with the Barry Dunn, um, study. And that however the study plays out, it will be a Powhatan County-owned community center on Powhatan County-owned property, run and operated by Powhatan County employees. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Now, we'll open the floor up for conversation, questions, debate, whatever you guys want to do. Mr. Williams?
Nothing but crews partnering with anybody where the county wouldn't have control. And that, that can be done all different ways. I'm, I'm not I'm not as concerned about the, the language about county-owned because I know this has been done in other localities where the jurisdiction has partnered with somebody else to do something and maintain control. So I'm, that, that doesn't bother me. So if I understand the motion, the motion is to say that we're going to go forward with the study just like it is today. But the outcome can't recommend or can't consider any other option than a county-owned facility. Is that the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to hear other board members' thoughts on that. Do, do you think that's a good idea? Mr. McClung?
Anybody else?
Um, Mr. Cherry, yeah. Um, so I don't care how we keep the community center, as long as we get a community center. I think, like Ms. Carmack said, Powhatan owned and ran, but I think the feasibility study will tell us if we need to
Right.
partner with someone, if we need more, more needs, more more help with this to maintain it and keep it staffed and stuff like that, but we need-
Stall tactic.
Yeah.
That's all that is.
Please.
Please.
I'll take care of it, Ms. Williams.
Sure.
I'll take care of it.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. McClung.
So either way, we need to get this done. So I'm, I am ready to move forward. I'm happy with the way this Mr. Hagie, the Barry Dunn group is laying. I've read this whole thing. And I think they're going to do a good job to tell us what we need and assessments we need, so. What size, how it's going to be ran, where they get, they have different types of locations in here that we, they would partner with or be built that, but at the end, it's going to be up to the board to decide where to go. So in the end, that's it.
Okay, I agree with you. Um, anyone else? Yes, it leaves me, doesn't it? Um, great comments from the public today. I will say that having been on this board for what I'll call a short period of time, but the term that I was elected to be, how things happen in this county are pretty amazing to me. I was a business owner. I'm not used to taking two years to figure out if I want to do something because by then the market's changed. By then times are different. By then people have aged. I heard a lot of great comments from you all today, and I mean really good, great thought out comments. You know, you come to this county, which is a great county. There is no absolute doubt in my mind. I've been here since nineteen sixty-three and I think it's a very good place to raise a family and I think it's a great place to retire to. I represent District Three and I recognized many of you from that district that spoke today. And I've had numerous phone calls about this community center for the extended period of time it's been on Board of Supervisors table, and there's been many comments. I will reflect back to a comment that was made about, let's save the sixty thousand dollars and move on. That's the way I think. It, it, it's not saying we don't need to know some information, but I think we can gather the information. I think that we have a very, uh, qualified staff, uh, to, to, to seek out information. I understand you spend sixty thousand dollars and you get information. I think we did a survey in two thousand and twenty. That was a, a Parks and Rec survey. Do you remember the cost of that, Mr. Shardine?
Now, is that in the neighborhood of twenty, thirty thousand?
It, it was a pretty substantial amount of money. And that Parks and Rec survey gave us a lot of great information. And, um, I was kind of reviewing some of that today and one of the, 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 one of the things that was talked about was a community center. So as far as Mike Byerly is concerned and representing the citizens of District Three, I'm listening to you and I hear you say you want a community center. How do we get there? That's our, our, that's our situation. We do have six and a half million dollars earmarked to be borrowed next year in the CIP for Parks and Rec. I don't know where you get that, where, where you, where you spend that six and a half million dollars. That'll be for the next board. But I certainly think if I'm sitting out there with you guys next year, I'm going to want some of that six and a half million to help me out. You pay taxes and we have a great education system. I pay taxes. You've paid for kids that go to school in this county that aren't your kids. It's a given thing that you're going to pay the taxes. You, I believe, you certainly have the right and you deserve to be heard and you deserve to have a little bit of that funding go towards you. Mr. Cox referred to, we have a great model with our volunteer fire department. We do. And I, I, I don't disagree with that. The, the, the way that I look at it is if I look at how much money is spent, how much money is spent on the seniors in this county? We have a pie. It has a hundred and ten million, a hundred and nine million dollars in it. And this group wants this amount, that group wants this, this group wants that. Everybody wants a little bit of that, that, and we're in that position that we make that decision that we get berated, chastised, condemned, applauded, congratulated. All of those things happen to us by virtue of the decisions we make, but we all take it very seriously. We all look at the information and we all try to make the decision that's best for Powhatan County in our future. And that's where I'm going with this, the future. We can go talk about this and do all these plans and, and surveys and studies for the next two years, and that's what it'll be, because this year is six months out. Once we say, yes, we want to do this, it's six months. And in six months, you know what's going to happen? You all will be right back here saying, what are you going to do? I get the the need for information to make a very good decision. And I think that's what Ms. Carmack is offering up, but I think she's trying to narrow the scope down of if your taxpayers are going to pay, if your tax dollars are going to pay for it, you should be the one demanding how it's going to be operated, not, let me go check with my partners and see what they say. Let me run this operation, me being Powhatan County, the citizens, the taxpayers. I do think the YMCA does a great job. I'll do something maybe a little unorthodox. Let me ask you here today, would you please raise your hand if you go to the YMCA? Five, six, seven. It's a great program. It's a good program, but it's not a community center. And this community center, I think, will serve much more than you all here today. There are kids, they don't need ball fields. Maybe they just need somebody to go talk to, a mentor or somebody. It could be one of you sitting out there in the audience right now and offer this kid in this county a piece of advice, some wisdom, some experience. And on the other side of that, maybe that kid can show me how to operate this so-called smartphone, you know? It, it, it's, let's work together, not, not individually. I, I heard about the War Memorial Building. I, I, I understand that. We don't own that building. The county decided that they didn't want that building anymore. We don't have anything there. If it were me and my business and I made the decision, I would start looking at where to build it and how big of one to build. That's what I would do. It takes many votes to get this done up here. So from that standpoint, it's up to this board on how we proceed. And I think that I, I would be, I will be very strong in supporting the county-run, county-operated community center.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I am. Absolutely.
This isn't, you haven't heard anybody tonight saying they didn't want to talk about and understand and explore and get information on a community center. Got agreement on it. Mrs. Carmack wants to shorten the process, uh, which is really not going to get shortened anyway because the funding will be done by the next board. That's, that's really what will happen, no matter what happens. It's just that simple. So it's going to another board. Uh, I'm going to support what our staff has put together, what our county administrator, uh, best recommends. There's a process going forward to produce the best results for the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I think that, um, from, from my perspective, it's all about not moving in a chaotic way forward, but moving in a methodical way. And this RFP started in June and was sent out and we got responses. And I think what I'm hearing, if, if I understood the motion correctly, the RFP i- is exactly what we're saying. But it's been modified to say just Powhatan, Powhatan County operates it. Or you can look at it and say it limits anyone else from being a partner in this deal. When you have a partner, you need the partner's permission. When you go to the YMCA, you don't own that building. And you want to spend two million dollars or three million dollars of your money, your money, to attach to another building, maybe not even attached, but still be on, connected to the YMCA in a way that you don't get to have control over it, they do. That's what I see the difference in, in what's going on up here with the board. When you go into a partnership, and there's such successful partnerships, no doubt. But at that point, you do give up some of your ability to demand what you want. And here, get this, when you have that partner, do you know who's paying for it? You are. It's your tax dollars that's paying for it. We need to do a roll call vote on this, I would suggest. Do you agree, Mr. Latchen?
I do.
Okay. Everybody understands the motion, correct?
We're voting on mine first, right?
We're vote, well, that's the only motion that's on the floor.
I thought he had, he had a motion.
Well, he has to make an amendment to this one. Is that-
He couldn't make an amendment to this one, but-
Or if mine fails.
Or if yours fails, then make another motion.
Then you make another motion. What, what would you like to do, Mr. Williams? Do you want to make an amendment or see what this one does?
Go ahead and see with this one.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams?
No, I will be making an amended motion.
Mr. McClung? Mr. Cox?
No.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Aye. So, Mr. Williams?
I move that we approve the study as proposed.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, debates, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Farley?
No. All right. That'll bring us to our last public comment period. So anyone would like to come and speak before the board? Floor is open. You have three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, up to five, if you're speaking on behalf of a group. And, uh, be sure to state your name and address. Floor is open.
Yeah, Tenafacker, thirty-six seventeen Trump, we're chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I think we can all answer the question here and say, whether a community center is feasible. I would say yes, it is, and they've been built in other counties. Something of the presentation along the line of what would be included in one in Powhatan, what the possible cost would be, you know, where, uh, it would be located, would certainly hopefully be things that would be a part of what we would find out. And how it would work into, uh, what we expect as far as funding and buying money, uh, going forward. But, uh, I think this has been just a little too much about whether it's feasible or not, because it's being built everywhere. And those are the kind of things that I would hope that we would have heard here today. You know, some kind of factual and concrete, because I understand you did a survey some time ago and it's in the CIP. It seems to be some statement that we're going to do this. And I, I just think we've been a little bit follow along than we are today on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh. To make this senior center a part of the platform, because they're kind of, they're proposing to build a senior center development, which is going to be seven feet away from the village. Should we, the senior scene is, would it be possible, like, maybe include something like a restaurant or senior house? I mean, a couple of units for senior housing next to it, maybe have a developer come in and ask if they want to develop the project and give, and give, and give the senior center? If they often do some, like, houses for seniors or, or stronger.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mike Oliver, forty-three, seventy-two, three, three, ten. I, I, I just want to say, you know, I've been coming to meetings now for several years and met with many of the individual board members about the needs for sort of the citizens and senior center. I've shown the grid, I've been on some of the rumors about this, that there's no, there's nobody in my district who wants such a thing. I've been that numerous times. So I'm happy to hear that there's a risk that, that, um, to change. And I would certainly be opposed to the idea of connecting to, to the Y. The Y is a, you go Y, isn't that something that everybody's going to feel? It is a rabbit sort of money to us to join. I actually, it should belong to the county issue, to the citizens, it should operate it by the county. And I think that's when, you know, I'm, you're concerned. As the six months now, we wait for another six months to win another study and that was meaning because there's somebody who comes in and has meetings and love conversations and that's what we've done for the last two hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Smith. I live at twenty-seven, twenty-one Puckington Road. I've lived here since two thousand and fifteen because of my grandkids. Um, I would just like to point out that, um, if the board could seek out maybe federal funding for the senior center or a community center. Um, I know even if you Google it, um, it comes up that there are grants available. And I think that we should kind of explore that to see how we would apply for them. And one day you're all going to be sitting here with us and hopefully you'll still stay in Powhatan and not go to Florida, but um, if you do, we'll all be friends, meeting at a nice community center and that's what I have hope for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bill DiNati, Junior, two thousand and eight, Anderson Highway. Uh, I want to follow suit with, uh, the previous gentleman that came up here and try to help educate you a little bit on some of the options that did come up, uh, that you all offered. I've spent twenty-three and a half years in the fire department out here in Powhatan County with Fire and EMS. Uh, I've been on here for thirty years. Uh, I've spent a better part of a decade as a volunteer fire chief out here. Uh, five of which, uh, I was a president of the Volunteer Fire Association for Powhatan County that helped, uh, fundraise for all five of the volunteer fire companies. Uh, I can tell you that three of the five volunteer fire companies are company-owned. They are not county-owned. Um, and I can tell you the amount of training that all of these five volunteer fire companies do. The meetings that they have, the committees that they have, there's no guarantee that those buildings will be available uh, for these events. Although it would be nice, there are times when they, they offer those, uh, spaces up, the meeting spaces uh, for public events and birthday parties, things like that. It's just, there's no guarantee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Hancock, twenty-six, seventy, Walker's Ridge, churn. I'd like to compliment what you've accomplished here today. Um, not running for office in the county. I have served as an elected official down in Hampton. You're doing a better job than what I left behind me. Uh, I appreciate the fact that the word feasibility means, let's see if we need it. Do we need it?
Yeah.
Okay, case closed. Uh, the next thing is the needs assessment and I'm all about that needs assessment. There's no use opening up an obsolete building when you have the opportunity to build what will serve your community. Appreciate the direction you're going in. Appreciate the county attorney and the supervisor putting their, uh, staff to work to accomplish this. Appreciate Ms. Carmack for expediting and look forward to seeing what the product is.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anyone else will close the public comment period. Any administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Board comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox?
Funds maybe from the federal side. We have on you grants, writer. Okay, so now we have somebody to go out and pursue that. So maybe that'll happen. Good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We're going to go into a closed session and we'll return hopefully very quickly.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion, consideration, interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, resignation of specific public officers concerning planning. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven lemon eight one of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of the four state matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion.
So moved.
Have a second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Clear in closed session. We'll return. Um, you guys? Ready? All right.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, that only such public business matters that are identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, need a roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClan?
Aye.
Mr. Cox? Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.